The meeting of the Montesereno City Council for May 7, 2019 will come to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, with all its majesty.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alahi?
President.
Councilmember Lawler? Councilmember Luthold?
President.
Mayor Turner.
President. Okay, so the first order of business is the oath of office. This is the administration of the oath of office and the seating of the newly appointed city council member, Daniel LeBouvet. Let me ask Daniel LeBouvet and Andrea to join each other at the podium.
If you'll raise your right hand and just speak after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
Aye, Daniel LeBouvet, do solemnly swear.
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, congratulations. Take your seat.
So, will Councilmember LeBouvet please join us and take your seat at the dais? This time, I would like Councilmember LeBouvet to say a few words.
Thank you. And city council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the Montesereno City Council. Since my candidate interview was first, I was able to join the audience and listen to the other candidates. I can appreciate that the selection process was difficult as other candidates were very passionate and qualified to help guide and improve our city. I'm humbled by your selection and will do my best to serve our community. I will make an effort to outreach out to the community so that you can get to know me and I can get to know you better. I will schedule some informal gatherings here at the city office so we can meet and discuss your vision of Montesereno or any concerns or problems. Please also feel free to email me or phone me at any time using my contact information posted on the city website. Also, if you see my wife and I walking our dog in the neighborhoods, please don't hesitate to introduce yourself and say hello. As you may know, there's a proposed development project at 1-808-1 Saratoga-Los Gatos Road to subdivide the .95 acre lot and the 100-year-old house that was destroyed by fire in June 2015 into a cul-de-sac and three 3,500 square foot homes with minimum setbacks. In my opinion, this subdivision proposal does not adequately adhere to the Montesereno General Plan, Design Guidelines, and Site and Architecture Criteria. I have been actively opposing this project with a community petition, neighborhood outreach, and detailed documents that are publicly posted on the city website. Due to the proximity of my home, I would like to disclose that I have a conflict of interest. I will recuse myself with respect to my new role as a city councilperson and the decision process, although I will retain my right to participate in public discourse and forums as a resident. I commit to keep this issue and my role as a city councilperson completely separate. Again, I'd like to thank the city council members for your kind consideration in allowing me to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. So Terry, are there any changes to the orders of the day?
There are none.
The next order of business is presentation. This evening, we have a Montesereno history presentation given by Doug McNeil. Doug needs no introduction. He has been honored at the White House in 2013 as a champion of change. So Doug has also been recognized at the Rotary Day and has been actively involved with the Lockheed Missile High Technology Company. So Doug McNeil, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am honored to speak to you tonight on our city's history. My name is Doug McNeil, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to share with you a project commissioned in 2006. With my gaze computer, I am able to digitize my movements and speak with you like many of our patients. Thanks to Andrea for accommodating us tonight with your busy schedule. In 2007, we launched the Battle for Peaceful Mountain history project for the 50th anniversary of the city. While I was serving on the cultural commission as the vice chairman, as a culmination of this celebration, we launched an effort to collect and catalog the years leading up and during the 50 years of our city. The final photos, interviews, and production of the display was completed on the day we set up the booth at Oak Meadow Park for the celebration. Following the anniversary, we were invited to display the history of Montesereno in the reading room at the Saratoga Public Library. I was honored to present our story to historical societies around the San Francisco area. The events were widely covered by the press and helped tell the story through the memories of each of the families who made up the original 28 parcels of what would become the city of Montesereno. My interest in this project started with a single aerial image of the Billy Jones Railroad before it moved to Oak Meadow Park from the original location at Dave's Avenue and Winchester Boulevard. I discovered a company in Oakland that had a private collection of aerial surveys from the late 1920s forward. The result of our research would reveal a pristine image of what the railroad looked like in 1954. Further research turned up earlier images of what the landscape of Montesereno, unincorporated Los Gatos, looked like in 1938 when it was all farm land. The images would reveal a landscape of the rich history I was able to share with the daughter of Billy Jones. With a copy of the 1930s census titled "The Redwood Township," she walked me through the entire farmlands of our city's 1,000 square acres. Geraldine Jones gave me a behind-the-scenes walking tour of every resident landmark and story in detail. This image is on display at the carousel in Oak Meadow Park. The research expanded to four additional families, including the Hit Fireworks family made famous by his pyrotechnics displays for the Panama Pacific Exposition, the opening of the Golden Gate Bridge, Treasure Island World's Fair, the recreation of the eruption of Mount Lassen, California State Fairs, and the famous cinematographic burning of Atlanta and Gone with the Wind, the amazing work of Thomas Ingles and his many contributions to the city for over 25 years, and the story of the Peak Clara Veil Dairy. Following the celebration, I submitted a proposal to Arcadia Books and was awarded an opportunity to publish our story. Furthermore, the Santa Clara Public Library published one of the stories I covered on the Hit Fireworks Factory. I enjoyed the opportunity to interview Thomas Ingles Jr., Geraldine Jones, Lloyd Hit, and Barbara Finney. Many thanks to my fellow commissioners, past mayors, council members, and community members who came forward to help with the project. Special appreciation to Joanne Tremblith, Suzanne Jackson, and Phil Levine who backed my efforts. With the support of city staff and the council, we pulled off a great 50th anniversary. We had outstanding sponsorship by Mayor Baxter. I provided a DVD of the presentations made and photos collected over the years. At a later date, I will provide a map of the city drawn by Henry Parker in 1957, the first map drawn of the area since the original surveys done by the United States Geological Survey from 1858 to 1865. Here is an overview of our history on our 62nd anniversary. Our 75th year anniversary isn't far away. We will show the pictures collected in the background while we play the preface for the book. Give me a minute to transition to the next recording.
Sorry about the slides.
The Battle for Peaceful Mountain. Introduction. The history of the city Montesereno is a living tribute to a group of civic-minded people working to preserve the rural environment that dominated the visual landscape of the Santa Clara Valley over 90 years ago. The beauty of the region was known to many as the Valley of Hearts Delight. The valley was home to over 7,500 farms documented in the Brainerd survey conducted in 1877. The agricultural transformation of the valley began following the gold rush. The West Valley hillside communities became a local tourist attraction and summered home to many of the San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose elite with the arrival of the passenger train service to Los Gatos in late 1877. The results of the survey would reveal that within the original city boundaries, there existed 28 parcels ranging from 10 to 40 acre ranch parcels. The local transformation as a residential community began as orchards were replaced with subdivisions and housing tracts shortly after World War II. In 1956, a small group of citizens formed the West County Improvement Association, WCIA, to organize community events that were centered on building a strong community, improving local government representation, and with improved city services. The roots of this city pay tribute to the early pioneering families who moved to the area because they were attracted to the climate, country living, and a lifestyle free from big city living. Above the train station to the west was a mountain peak known as Mount Pleasant, which was documented in an 1865 United States Geological Land Survey Office in San Francisco. This serene mountain peak was a prominent landmark for many and a namesake for the city known as Montesereno or Serene Mountain. The Spanish referred to the mountain as El Sereno. El Sereno has two meanings: A, peaceful man and B, peace officer, the latter being a city night watchman who patrols the streets. The mountain stands today as a symbol of hillside preservation. Fifty years after the annexation, the community below continues to hold true to its roots of the preservation of rural living governed by a successful community focused on low taxation and on holding true to the vision created by its founder, retired Vice Admiral Thomas Ingles. In 1918, on a Sunday drive from the Mare Island Navy Base in Vallejo, California, a young Navy officer arrived in the western Santa Clara Valley and became enchanted by the area. Upon his retirement from the Navy, Vice Admiral, Thomas Ingles settled in an area close to the town of Los Gatos following a decorated service in the United States Navy, including a distinguished role in World War II. The greater area surrounding the town of Los Gatos was rich in undeveloped orchards and farms identified as unincorporated Santa Clara County parcels. His memoirs describe the rural nature and beautiful landscape that attracted him to the area. The Battle for Peaceful Mountain was won as a consequence of the annexation battles in the late 1950s between the Los Gatos mayor, retired Army Colonel Eddie Merrill, and retired Navy Vice Admiral Ingles. In short, the battle lines were drawn as two charismatic and resourceful retired military leaders applied their skills to community building. The division ensued as the result of a challenge from the Los Gatos mayor who commented that "A small town without commercial development would fail without adequate commercial growth and tax revenues." The residents and farm owners at the time were very interested in maintaining the rural nature of the city and limiting any future commercial growth. The town of Los Gatos was growing rapidly, and many were concerned with rapid urbanization and commercial growth. As a consequence, local elections were held and those landowners not a part of Los Gatos won a popular vote to become members of a growing residential community known as Peaceful Mountain. Mr. Ingles would play a pivotal role in becoming the city's founding mayor, spending 25 years of his life establishing a city known to community members as Montesereno, Peaceful Mountain, building community, and preserving the local landscape. He would spend his twilight years preserving the vision he saw in 1918. The challenge presented to him by the mayor of Los Gatos would serve as a reminder to Mayor Ingles to hold his course and not be proven wrong. In 1968, he was successful in not only partnering with local communities to maintain the beauty of the area, but he was also influential in getting then-Governor Ronald Reagan to declare the highway connecting Los Gatos, Montesereno, and Saratoga as a scenic highway line. Mr. Ingles was a popular community member and was invited to celebrate the opening of several hospitals, schools, churches, and local business. When the mayor attended the ribbon-cutting ceremonies, he would use a garden trowel to symbolize the proportionate size of Montesereno when compared to all the neighboring communities who attended with full-size shovels. In 1917, another popular resident, Billy Jones, purchased 10 acres from the Lockdale family, key architects of Los Gatos, for $6,000 in gold point. The property was located at the corner of Winchester Boulevard and Dave's Avenue. Billy Jones, a descendant of the Donner Party, was a railroad engineer who had passed through the area while working on the South Pacific Coast Railroad. His 10-acre orchard would become a popular local attraction and gathering place in the West Valley for over 25 years due to a steam train called the Wildcat Railroad which he ran in his prune orchard. In 1938, Billy Jones purchased the number-two spot railroad from a scrapyard in San Francisco. The train was destined for Japan to be melted down to produce steel for the war production. Billy bought the train off the shipping docks in San Francisco. In 1941, the train became a favorite destination for families and children across the Santa Clara Valley. Billy Jones would donate all the money he made running the train to local charities. The railroad would pay tribute to the memories of his two boys who were both killed in World War II. During these years, Billy Jones became a popular community member and enjoyed the happiness he brought to the entire community. This charitable nature and passion for trains would draw common interest with a man named Walt Disney. Walt Disney was a frequent visitor to the Jones Orchard and Railroad. The theme park, Disneyland, much like Billy's orchard, would be encircled by a scale steam railroad. Billy would become a close friend of Walt Disney and was present to operate the Disney Railroad during the inaugural opening day of the park in 1956. In 1938, Billy Jones' brother-in-law built a house for a famous young writer named John Steinbeck who moved to peaceful surroundings in order to complete the manuscripts for The Grapes of Wrath and Of Mice and Men. He would entertain early film actors Charlie Chaplin and Burgess Meredith at his home, amongst other Hollywood luminaries. The prune orchard of Henry Parker, which was located up the dirt road from the Jones family, would become the one of the first private landing strips in the valley for the growing aviation industry. Henry would later create the first City of Montesereno map, as well as the city emblems for both Los Gatos and Montesereno. Henry Parker allowed George and William Hit to fly their biplane to Mills Field in San Francisco. Both worked for Western Air Express and commuted by a biplane to their jobs at the airport. George and William Hit were the sons of Fred Hit who moved to the area in the 1920s and opened one of the largest fireworks factories west of the Mississippi. Fred Hit's family operated their business from 1923 to 1953, inventing and producing a variety of pyrotechnic devices for the railroad, entertainment, and consumer industries. Fred's entrepreneurial nature led to several developments on his sprawling ranch. His musical interests included buying and restoring pipe organs from local movie theaters which were closing during the Depression. Fred experimented and created the first keyboard-driven musical bells, which led to the keyboard-activated fireworks control console he used in several of the largest-scale fireworks displays along the west coast. These displays would include the Panama Pacific Exposition in San Francisco, at the opening of the Golden Gate Bridge, the Treasure Island World Fair, the Sacramento State Fair, Santa Clara County Fairs, and the celebrated 1931 volcanic fireworks stage eruption display, which marked the opening of the new Mount Lassen State Park. This 6,000-pound powder fireworks pyrotechnic display would capture the imagination of many, drawing huge crowds to the new state park and demonstrating both his expertise as a showman, as well as an innovative pioneer in the field of pyrotechnology. His factory expanded over the years and was eventually purchased by the Olin Corporation. This parent company also purchased the Winchester Repeating Arms Ammunition Company. The factory held many names over the years: Pacific States Fireworks, Columbia Powder Works, Olin Corporation, and United States Rodent Destruction Bombs, until the property was sold in the early 1960s. The Clara Veil Dairy was the last of two remaining dairies in the state of California to deliver non-pasteurized milk to the doorstep. Kenneth Peak's Dairy would operate for over 67 years, producing unprocessed, unhomogenized, raw milk. Mr. Peak delivered milk across the valley to many households, including the Steinbeck family. While the roots of a city are traced back to many key community members, the leadership provided by a few have a profound impact on its quality of life. Today, the small city of Montesereno continues to provide a rare opportunity to work in the Silicon Valley while enjoying the remarkable opportunity to retire at the end of the day at the base of a serene, peaceful, wicket residential community in the shadow of Mount Pleasant. The hillside community has grown from the 28 local farms into a residential community of 1,200 homes. The legacy Mr. Ingles left survives to this very day. In his footsteps, many in this community have stepped forward to preserve not only the character of the community, but the founding principles of a community governed by the many. After one evening spent talking with the son of Thomas Ingles, Thomas Ingles Jr., he commented that his father was a rational optimist who believed that sphere of influence in life or community is determined by the active minority and approved by a passive majority who permit it. The challenge to maintain this will forever be remembered by a newspaper caption that read "The Little City That Could."
Do I have any comments or questions from the council?
I guess I just wanted to see if this is something that is shared on the city website or other locations that we can make sure everybody has a chance to see.
He gave us a copy and said we could do that.
And you have here all the original, much all of these original pictures are here.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, and I wanted to thank you. That was very, very inspiring, and it's good to know the history of the city that you were living in.
We had a lot of fun collecting it. There's a lot more to be found, and he really wanted to write that book, but was working a lot of long hours and didn't have time to finish it, but he did the introduction. So you heard the introduction.
Well, we'll take a look at it. Look forward to reading it.
Someone else will pick it up. Thank you for allowing him the opportunity to share it because it's been a few years and a lot of new faces that haven't heard it. So it's fun to be able to come and share it again.
Thank you so much for Peaceful Mountain.
And the struggle kind of goes on. There are some bills in the state senate which want to turn this Peaceful Mountain into another multifamily housing enterprise, so that struggle is going on.
Yep, so we all moved here because we love the rural atmosphere, and hopefully we can keep it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the next order of business is oral communications. Do I have a blue card?
Excuse me, did you try to do?
Please come up to the podium, please.
Hi, Patricia Patterson from Vista Avenue. When you were at the Sunshine Event at Los Gatos Mississauga Church, I filled out a card related to some graffiti that I had seen toward the end of Dave's, nine and Dave's along that way. And the other day, when I drove by, it was gone. So I'm here to thank whoever read the card and saw to the eradication of the graffiti. I didn't think it belonged in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have no written communications. So our next order of business is the consent calendar. And we have six items on the consent calendar, which we will take in one motion. Does anyone in the council wish to speak on any one of these items? Yes, Councilmember Luthold.
Yeah, I just had one question, which I didn't have a chance to address in advance, and that was just on the warrant list, I see a litigation services entry for $2,100. I'm just wondering which litigation matter that was.
Let's see. I'm trying to remember. Sue is not here.
That would be for the Paget litigation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? No? Okay, will someone make a motion? Do I have a motion to approve this item? These items?
Dan gets to make the motion.
It's not showing up yet.
Oh, you don't have the, he doesn't have the screen.
I've got it.
First you have to, did you join the meeting?
Yeah, the meeting was joined.
Oh, let's just be sure.
No, it's just me.
I stuck it in. Couldn't resist. We'll let him sec as you get to it first.
So Andrea, do I have a second? No?
Are you able to?
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Luthold and a second by Councilmember Alahi.
Oh, there it goes.
You should be able to vote.
Vote's not coming up. Oh, here we go.
Okay, if all votes are in, motion passes 4-0.
Okay, good. So the next order of business is unfinished business. And this is a request to establish a memorial for veterans in the Peaceful Mountain. So the chair recognizes Michael Frangadakis.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, fellow citizens. I think it's kind of appropriate that Doug brought his presentation because it's a beautiful presentation, and I think we all love the city, and that's the reason why it's so unique. But it is missing one thing that I think most of you, all of you agree to, which is surprising to me since it was founded by some Army-retired and admirals who forgot to put a veterans memorial in the town honoring the veterans of the city. But we have a chance to rectify that. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to make a proposal for two things to happen, but I would like to show a little short video, which we have in our Los Gatos Memorial, which kind of shows why we're going to ask the city to do what I'm going to ask it to do. So Terry, would you do that for me? Hey, I think it says it all. I think you're going to recognize a lot of those people. They're all local people, by the way. So I'd like to, Terry, would you kind of go through my slides here? Because we'll see what it is that we're building. We started a process with Los Gatos seven years ago. We're about to have the dedication on June 15th, and everybody in the city of Monte Sereno is invited, and I'm going to show you what it is that we're doing here, what we're building and what we're planning to do, and how I can, and I'm going to ask the city of Monte Sereno to also be part of it. So go ahead and click. So our mission basically is to not only build a memorial, which is going to be at 110 Main Street, that's right at the Town Hall where they have music in the park, in the grassy area there, right in the heart of town. We have a world-class memorial that is the Flame of Liberty, by the way. And inside the Flame of Liberty, you will see, I think there's a slide later on here. Let's go to the next slide. The Flame of Liberty has the Soldier's Cross, which is the helmet, rifle, and boots will be inside the lighted Flame of Liberty. That's a picture of what it's going to look like. We'll have the Wall of Honor. We're doing something also very unique in most memorials. We're going to be honoring first responders. We all know that they're part of the process. They keep us safe. The Wall of Honor is behind there. I'm not going to go into all the details at this point, because I have a limited amount of time. That bell was found at the police station, I believe in a basement or something. It was from nineteen, early, like 1910. It was in one of the first fire stations in Los Gatos. The city gave it to us, and we're going to go ahead and redo it, shine it up, and mount it. You can see a picture of what it's going to look like at the memorial. We're also honoring Todd Beamer and Mark Bingham. I think everybody knows who that is. They are Los Gattans. They were the two people on Flight 9/11 that tried to stop the plane from hitting either, well, we don't know where it was going to hit. We think it was one of the, it was going to be the Capitol or the White House. Those two gentlemen were directly responsible for that not to happen. So they will be honored at the memorial as well. I won't go into that. That's what it costs. This is about a $2.4 million project, by the way. There's kind of a rendering. Another kind of 3D view of what it's going to look like. That explains what the Soldier's Cross looks like, a picture of the Soldier's Cross, which will be inside of the Flame of Liberty. I think that's pretty much it. Well, that talks about who our builder is. There's pictures of what it looks like now. I don't know if anybody has seen it, but it's a pretty extensive construction area going on, on Main Street. It will be completed on June 15th, which is right around the corner. It's probably going to be the biggest thing that's going to happen to Los Gatos maybe ever. We're expecting hundreds of people and dignitaries. We've been told that the Security Council Chief of this administration is going to be our keynote speaker. We also, I think, are having Anna Schuh, our Congresswoman, and all kinds of local politicians. Love to have my Monte Sereno board there as well. Okay, and so that's kind of Phase One. That shows you what we've been doing in Los Gatos. What I would also like to ask Monte Sereno to do is form an ad hoc committee to put some kind of a memorial right here at the flagpole area. And I'm asking them to probably spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000. My idea is maybe a park bench with some kind of a plaque. And also, I don't know if it's already named, it may be already, but I'd like to name that the Admiral English Plaza, or there too, I'm not sure. The committee will figure all that out, but this is kind of giving you an idea where my head is on this. So we name it the Admiral English Plaza where the flagpole is, and we put some kind of a Veterans Memorial here in Monte Sereno, since it doesn't really have a formal one. And by the way, you're one of two cities that does not have a memorial to its veterans. The other one is also a very affluent community. I haven't talked to them yet, and that is Los Altos Hills. So that's Phase One. Phase Two of my proposal tonight is to ask the committee, the ad hoc committee, to be part of the Los Gatos Veterans Memorial Foundation, because we will be supporting veterans in perpetuity through that memorial, and I would like Monte Sereno to be part of that committee. And so that's, those are basically the two ideas that I have, and maybe when we have our ad hoc committee, we'll have other ideas. But that kind of opens the door officially for what I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
So let me just make a comment here. I think we will go ahead and take the $2,000 and put, and talk about that in our budget session.
We could definitely do that.
Okay. And then today, tonight, we're going to talk about the ad hoc committee and the Monte Sereno participating in the Veterans Memorial Foundation. Is that right?
Yes, so if the council is interested in creating the ad hoc committee, we'll have to schedule that for a future meeting, but we can talk about tonight if that's the direction that council wants to take.
So do you want me to take a motion for those two items?
So we could just get direction from the council. If you're interested in bringing back an item to create an ad hoc committee, we can do that. And then the other item would be the...
Monte Sereno Memorial Foundation, Los Gatos Veterans Memorial Foundation.
So that could both be included in the ad hoc committee discussion? So we can talk about what the roles would be, and that could be working on creating a memorial here, and then also participating in the foundation. That could be included in the resolution. And then the budget item would be at your meeting in June.
Okay. Okay, so let me see if somebody wants to make a motion. Councilmember Alahi?
Mr. Frangadakis, thank you for doing this. I think this is important that we have a Veterans Memorial. I know you've been working on this since the last, since almost a year now. I think Burton was involved with this at last time. So I'm glad to see you bring it forward. And at this time, the motion that you need is, do you need a specific motion to set it on the agenda, or what do you need?
No, we really just need direction if the council, if three of you are interested in bringing back consideration of forming an ad hoc committee, that's all we would need.
Right, yeah, so I would recommend that, that we consider that, and also participate as much as we can with the Los Gatos, once we get that ongoing.
So Andrea, do you need to do anything? Ask us? No?
We just need a nod of heads, yes or no?
Okay. So our next order of business is commission reports. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on commission's report? No? Our next order of business is council member comments.
I'd like to welcome Dan to the city council and look forward to his inspiring work on resolving some of our issues that we're going to have with the state.
Thank you.
We'll work on that. Other than that, I guess we attended, the sheriff had a SWAT. Is that the time for the comment? So that's a good...
The SWAT competition.
SWAT competition, and I was impressed by Ravina's talents. And it's a competition that the sheriff of Santa Clara County puts out, where all the SWAT teams compete for what's called the best in the West. It's interesting to attend, and recommend if anybody can attend that, should do that to see how these guys are, how hard they work to make sure we're safe.
Yes, and I got pictures. Okay, so our next order of business then is city manager's report. Terry?
The only thing I really want to just remind the council and the community that we have still a few, let's see, make a check, got the right dates here. Yes, we have two more. We have two more of the wildfire preparedness community meetings, the Ready, Set, Go program. I encourage everyone in the community, as well as any council members who have not been yet, to attend one of these meetings. You can go onto the city's website, it's on the homepage under "In the News." There is, let's see, tomorrow night over at the Jewish Community Center in Los Gatos, and another one on Tuesday, May 14th. It says Pavilion at Redwood Estates on Madron Drive. So I would encourage all folks to attend one of these to help yourself be better prepared in the event of a wildfire.
Okay.
Just a comment on that, if I may. If that isn't getting posted on Nextdoor each and every time, we might as well hit it again, make sure that we get that out.
We are posting it regularly, and that's a good reminder that we, since we have two more, we should repost it again.
I think Jackie Rose has a posting this afternoon.
Yeah, I think that they have been doing it as well, but it never hurts to send one more.
Yep.
Okay, so let's move on to future agenda items. This is pretty unique. Nobody's talking. Usually, everybody says I have one. Okay, so we're ready to adjourn? Our next meeting is May the 22nd at 7:00 here at City Hall. Since there's no further business, let's move to adjourn.
Excuse us, the 21st.
Oh, 21st?
Yeah, 14 and 7, 21, right, yeah, 21st.
Just one reminder, I guess July we're not having any city council.
That is correct. Both of them, actually, this council approved the calendar, and both meetings in July were canceled for a summer break.
Okay, I got to hit this hard for our ex-mayor Burton back there. Okay, since there's no further business, let's move to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.
That's the first meeting I've ever seen.